Ready to go? All right, so welcome back. We had opened our regular session previously and we are continuing that. And I would like to start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just as a reminder, all of our regular school committee meetings are televised and recorded. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is invitation to speak. Do you have any comments? Not a large audience, so... Okay, so we will move along to the approval of minutes. And we are going to have a conversation about minutes a little bit later. But for now, we're going to go through... I know that you had some thoughts, Katie.
Yeah, I just had two quick corrections and I'll start with the minutes from June 17th. And the first one was under the section called Discussion of Bus Leases. The sentence read, "The committee voted to eliminate the maintenance position and lease new buses." And I wanted to add the parenthetical, "during FY '16 budget discussions."
Okay.
Because the time period for that discussion was unclear. And then, under the discussion of FY '16 budget, the sentence read, "the incoming kindergarten..." I wanted to amend it to say, "the incoming kindergarten students per classroom is higher than the current second grade students per classroom." Because the way it read, it implied that the grade was higher, the overall grade level size was higher, which is not correct. The kindergarten grade is at 104 and the second grade is at 137. So it really is the classroom, students per classroom was the correction there.
All right.
So those were my two comments on the June 17th.
Okay, I have a couple of little issues. You want to go ahead, Helen?
Oh, just...
Oh, I thought you had your hand up.
Well, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, on the third page, under Sports Financial Update, we did discuss that we wanted to see the breakout by sport with the operational budget in input as well, so that every sport doesn't look like a negative.
So can I just ask what the words are that you're looking for?
Athletic Director Ron Ford should add the operational allocation by sports in addition to offsets of the revenue offsets.
And correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have the benefit of a recording, but weren't the sports financials that we received just for the first part of the school year?
They were for fall 2014.
Fall 2014, so it wasn't the entire year. So I would like the record to show that the sports financials were a four. Fall 2014. And also hopping back to the first page, under Gifts. When we accepted the $5,000 gift from the PSO for the resurfacing of the basketball court, could we say that that's at Deer Hill School? And I just wanted to confirm that it was six ping pong tables also that were gifted to us?
Yes.
And then, under Discussion of Fiscal Year Budget, just a minor little typo. At this time, there are five kindergarten teachers. And I think that's it. Does anybody else have any comments on the June 17th minutes? No? Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2015.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the approval of the minutes of Thursday, July 9th?
I had two comments and it was under the Bus Maintenance Plan.
Yep.
The sentence that reads, "Mr. DeGennaro advised the committee they had a conversation with New England Transit, but do not have a written, I'd like to insert general maintenance contract yet for the committee, and insert for the committee to review."
What line is that? I'm sorry. Mr. DeGennaro...
Seven.
Oh, advised the committee that they had a conversation with him. And what do you want to add?
I want to add, before a written contract, I want to add the general maintenance.
Okay.
And after the word "yet" for the committee to consider. Because it sounded like we didn't have a written contract with them, which we do, but it's...
It's for something else.
It's for something else.
Okay. And you have another point on this, don't you?
The second point was in the parenthetical halfway down about the note.
Yep.
Town would pay for insurance, registration, and I'd like to insert the word potentially maintenance for approximately $5,500. Those are my two points.
Okay. Anyone? Yes, Ellen?
Under Finance, the warrant approvals I obtained, I did not vote in on them.
On all, four of them? Anything else? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2015?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2015.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item on our list is the superintendent's report. Right in your packet, you have a number of gifts right there. These are items that will require a vote, so I guess I'm going to ask, do you want your votes individually? So that they're not lumped in there altogether? Yes. So on the top, you have the Cohasset Hockey Boosters, as you can see. And that was for some ice rental for 2014-15. It's in the amount of $5,736. So do I have a... Do I start with that one first? Sure. Do I have a motion to accept the gift from Cohasset Hockey Boosters in the amount of $5,736?
I'll make a motion to approve the gift from the hockey boosters for $5,736.
In a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I could just second.
Okay, all in favor and it needs to be a roll call, please.
Aye, Katie Dugan.
Aye, Mary McGolden.
Aye, Ellen Marr.
Aye, Gina Stino.
All right, thank you. The next two pages, one is a letter to Phil Mahoney from the Friends of Cohasset Football and it's addressed to me from the Pilgrim Bank. From the Friends of Cohasset Football, they made a donation of $5,000. The purpose is to submit a check from the Friends of Cohasset Football for a grant donation awarded by the Pilgrim Bank Foundation in the amount of $5,000 to fund the summer fitness program at Cohasset High School. This past spring, Coach Phil Mahoney applied for the grant on behalf of the Friends of Cohasset Football to fund the summer program, which allowed the Cohasset High School athletic program to open and staff the CMHS Fitness Center for four days per week for seven weeks over the summer. And it was a couple of hours in the morning and a couple of hours in the evening. Special thanks to Coach Mahoney and Pilgrim Bank President and CEO Frank Campbell, who came himself to give us the check for supporting the program. And then, of course, on the back is the additional letter. So that requires a vote and actually, those three pages, I'm sorry, they go together because the third page is the actual picture of the check.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to accept the... It's actually a check. This one's a little bit complicated because it was given on behalf of a grant type of situation that was received, but I believe that we should vote to accept the gift from both. From Pilgrim Bank and with great thanks to Phil Mahoney for writing the grant and obtaining the funds. So if we could have kind of a dual motion, that would be great.
I would make a motion to accept the sum of $5,000 from the Pilgrim Bank Foundation via the Friends of Cohasset Football to be used for keeping the fitness center open this past summer for seven weeks.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Roll call, please.
Aye, Katie Dugan.
Aye, Mary McGolden.
Aye, Ellen Marr.
Aye, Gina Stino.
That is a very nice thing that they did.
Yes, and...
I know that we all appreciate that we have a program that we can open up to students in the summer. It's great.
They were there bright and early as well as in the afternoon.
Kids really took advantage of it.
That's great. So, okay, so the next item on the agenda, Barbara?
Yep, the next item on the agenda is to discuss about the transportation plan and what we will be doing. I sent you two items, one was a PowerPoint and then you should have received also the log. So what I'm also going to hand you out, because Dave came this morning and said to me, "I've done log a different way, what do you think?" And I said, "This is so clear, beginning with July 1st fiscal '16." And I said, "I'm going to distribute it to you. You folks can tell me whether you prefer this style or this style." I can say that I think the clarity of this style might outweigh the clarity of this style. Okay, so weigh in.
I have mine.
I don't want to take credit for it because actually Kelly Dixon was... We had used this many years ago to distinguish what our labor costs were and what our parts costs were. And then, when we had somebody in-house, we didn't use the log anymore.
Okay.
So this was used in years past. So the front page actually is like a snapshot or summary of all our vehicles, our transportation vehicles. And we break it out into three types of repairs, our maintenance. The first section is the preventative maintenance, where, you know, we have the oil changes and so forth. The middle section is just vandalism. If we have ripped seats or things like that, we would put the cost there. At this point, we don't add those costs, which is great. And then, the third section is repair. If a bus needs shocks or springs or tires, that would be a repair type thing, not necessarily maintenance. So this started as of July 1st. I know it says 8/11, but I think we put everything in the backup as of July 1st. So each page is a separate bus and it tells you what work has been done so far and we'll just keep updating it as we go on.
This is fabulous. It is great.
I like that format better. So, but before we absolutely moved and continued that, because I know we're going to be doing monthly updates, I wanted to make sure with the committee that you found this extremely clear, which I do. I found it quite clear.
I think it's, from my perspective, it's great because you can tell if there's a bus or one of our vehicles that, you know, is having some chronic issues.
Yep.
And...
And my concern is that if we're not seeing it broken out like this and we're only seeing how much the bus is cost to repair, we're not aware of what the labor cost is. You know, I think it's important to have that not lumped in with the total. We need to keep our eye on that and know, you know, that we're making the right decisions.
Right, exactly. So I wanted...
Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's great. I, and I don't want to be preemptive to the next part of the presentation, but would it maybe not also... Oh, you have, oh, you have the work performed by. That was my question, was to say, put in the service provider for whom's doing the work. And so you have it there.
Yeah, so the detail is in the back page, is per bus.
Per bus, right, okay.
And we can add more as we go along.
Okay.
You know, if you see something else that you want to change or add to, we can always do that too.
So that being the case, I wanted the committee to see the difference. And I found this to be, the clarity will help us moving forward figure out and give us a really clear definition of where we're spending our monies and be able to make some comparisons as to what good decision-making we're making now and moving forward. The other thing I wanted to do is you were sent the PowerPoint electronically.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I believe you were also given the hard copies here. But I'm going to give you one. Can you just check and make sure?
I don't have the hard copy.
You don't? Okay.
I just printed one.
All right, good. Because I brought hard copies with me. Do you need one as well?
I've got one.
All right, so I think you can send that down to Gina.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure because the original copies that Jennifer made should have topped the back page, which is really the point of discussion. And I want to make sure you have that with you tonight.
That's just option one, option two A and option C?
Yeah, okay. So when we realized it was missing, I said, "Quick, go back, make new ones." Anyway, so I want to make sure that you had everything there. Because that's really the point of our discussion. So you have the two different logs and you have the PowerPoint and that's what we'll talk about tonight. So very quickly, on the second slide, we're really just, how this was ruled out was there's an update on the Department of Transportation and state inspection and there's an update on the vendor discussions that we had between First Student, New England Transit, and Steve's Equipment. And then, there's a maintenance vendors matrix for you. And then, on the back, it's showing you the three options. So happily, the buses are just about ready to roll for the opening of school. We have, which piece is happening?
So we, you know, as you know, we have the DOT inspection on 8/3 and there were two buses that didn't pass because one bus had a expired state inspection sticker. So that has been completed. That was completed on 8/5. And then, the other bus was taken out of service because of the parking brake valve. Actually, NET was down today to replace that valve. So we're in good shape and we have scheduled the DOT inspector to come back on Friday to re-inspect these two buses and then we should have, you know, everything clear and clean, ready to roll.
And that's Friday the 14th?
Yes, this Friday. Yep, yep.
So we're assuming after this Friday, we're ready to roll. If we were to open school on the 15th, we'll wait a few days, but we're ready. And that's the point behind this, is to let you know that the buses are in excellent shape and ready to roll. Then, what happened between slides four and five, what I did was I, we did a breakout of our visits to First Student, our visits to New England Transit, our visits to Steve Equipment in Marshville. Because there's been a lot of discussion, what is if anybody can do for us? Who can cover what? And one of the biggest pieces we wanted to make sure of in all of this is that there was redundancy in our coverage. So if one company wasn't able to take care of us, we had another company we could go to. And that became very apparent. I was at the First Student visit. I've been working by phone with New England Transit with a plan to go up there. And I went with Dave to Steve's Equipment. And again, very helpful. It allowed us to understand what each of the companies could offer us. Clearly, Steve's Equipment is a more local entity and yes, they can offer us towing locally. They can do some of the work locally. But the bigger factor was what happens to the big work? What happens to the warranty work? What happens in terms of the speed in which work has to get done? And so it really comes down to working with NET and working with First Student. And so I'm not spending a lot of time reading each of the bullets here because I think you've had a good chance to do that. But the fact is that both First Student and NET are able to do the identical warranty work. And while First Student said that some of the warranty work, they might send directly back to NET. The fact that First Student buys their buses from NET is indicative that they've got an excellent working relationship with the company, as well as they will let us know if there's something in warranty that they can do and they'll be reimbursed for, or they'll recommend whether it should go right back to NET. At the same power, we're working with NET that in the event we can't get it to them or they have a backup, we can work with First Student. So I think the fact is that we're covering in terms of the kinds of services that we would require from any of these folks. And I was highly impressed by the Brockton branch that we got to go to. We got to see a number of companies that go in and go out. I'm waiting to work with Stone in particular and have a conversation with the superintendent there because they're obviously about the same size as ours and they have no one on call. So the fact is they were able to do it without having a mechanic on the premises ever. And she's on vacation through the end of this week and then I'll get ahold of the superintendent at that point and see how they do it. The interesting piece was, and of course, we know that the big concern is, do we have somebody on staff here full-time? Do we have somebody on staff here part-time? Or do we rely on the services of NET or on First Student and what will those look like? And it was interesting because even when we were thinking about part-time work, we were thinking three, four hours a day to make sure people were covered in the morning. And we were very surprised to hear from Steve, who said, "Hmm, maybe 10 hours. If you want more, fine, but you could really do it on 10 hours." And New England Transit, who said, "I don't think you really need anybody, but we could talk about it." And First Student, who's made arrangement that they can send us the person who is on the premises in Hingham. And I know we talked about this last week, but they could send the person to us who's on the premises in Hingham for this year, who needed them. And they would do their work over in Hingham. And then, when the buses pulled out, they would come over and help us. And we have backup buses, obviously, to help us along the way if we had something that had a code go off and maybe we had to hit the bus out of service for the morning. So we could have things done almost in that day or in the next day or two. And First Student talked about, you know, what their turnaround time would be, as did NET, as did Steve. So we talked about all those details, which was very reassuring, saying to me, if all of these entities who, and particularly with First Student, who has over 30,000 buses on the road and works with many, many different school districts across the country, could say, "You don't really need somebody there 20 hours a week." I felt a lot more confident after speaking with them and the fact that you can practically speed dial them and every time I have, they pick up the phone. So I was pleased to see that. But the other piece that really was a comfort was knowing that New England Transit and First Student have a very tight relationship, so that they're talking on a regular basis and would communicate in terms of our buses. If we brought something into First Student, talk with New England Transit exactly what we would need to do and if it was warranted, the reimbursement factor that First Student would have, plus parts. And then, if there was any overage in terms of there was money left over at the end of that, First Student said that they would put it in an account and then if we brought anything else then we'd come off the next bill. So the money would not be overspent. And that to me was really key, that we not be spending more money than needed. But the number of buses that they work with across the country was a very large comfort zone for me. And then, on page six, you'll notice that there is, we put together a maintenance vendors matrix just to let you see who would cover warranty repairs, who could do the engine repairs, the routine maintenance, who would do the towing, the onsite oil change. We're looking at onsite loop to come and be able to do that for us, the onsite tech, the on-call tech. Tech's available for inspections and then, of course, the labor rate and the loaner buses. A couple of things that I liked about NET was the concept, as well as First Student's, the concept of having pre-inspections so that when we get to the inspection, there are no surprises. We would be able to know in advance what work needed to be done on the bus and in fact, it would then be ready for the actual inspection. And then, of course, we have the option to have somebody come from Steve's, I mean, excuse me, from New England Transit and be with us during that inspection. Additionally, I think it's great that NET will be training Missy with the codes and that is coming up shortly, I think, to do not say.
Well, we have a tentative date of the 25th.
Yes, I had that confirmed yesterday.
Oh, you did?
Okay.
Oh, okay, good.
I assume Kelly told you to.
No, not yet. I was waiting to hear. Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay, so on the 25th...
So I'll be making a trip with Missy also.
Okay. Excellent. So Missy will be up there. She'll be getting trained on the codes and the laptop as well will come down with you, I presume?
Yep.
Is what Craig Logan had said to me, that they'll be giving us the laptop. We still have the option to work out the loaner bus, so we could be an extra bus on the premises. And then, of course, we have to cover the insurance and registration costs and things like that. But the fact is, we should, excuse me, we should be able to have enough buses on the lot. So even if two buses went down in the morning, we would be able to have backup buses to take the students to school. Additionally, the concern about cold mornings, cold starts, the buses are equipped to cover that through the heating devices that they have. So I'm not concerned about that either. And because there's still new buses, the prediction from the Capitol, when we even put this plan and made this plan more than just a concept, was that new buses, lower fees. And better starts, newer buses won't have trouble with the cold starts. We shouldn't have as many breakdowns. Yes, there are those flukes. We know even in a new car, nothing is perfect. There are still issues. But we really believe that we'll be able to take care of it if we have the backup buses and then we have the backup personnel through First Student sitting over in the Hingham Public Schools. Based on all of that information, it then comes down to the fact that we had to come up with some plans. And before we actually talk about the three options, what I am going to hand out to is, this was one thing, just as an example, that First Student gave to us that I want you to have a copy of. And this was kind of reassuring, that when a bus comes in, they have a type of service performed. They keep this four-page document on hand. We certainly can have a copy. But I just wanted you to see the kinds of information that they would go through that, because they are more local to us than Tinsbury, that they might be our first call, they might be our second call. But also in the preventive work, I wanted the committee to be aware of how in-depth this can be and exactly the process that they go through. And they actually, while we were there, walked us through what this would look like in terms of indicating the kind of work that needs to be done and then costing it out to us as we need to do. We would also be able to have this on file for ourselves so that we would know exactly what got inspected, what got fixed, what might need to come up. And the nice thing about First Student was that they would say to you, they'll be able to say in a preventive work, the fact that, you know, you really only have probably 5,000 miles left on your tires. You might want to be thinking about replacement costs. And then, you can get your house in order for doing the replacement cost because you've been given the notice. It's not like your tires are worn and you show up and they announce, "Today's the day you need to replace your tires." So that we can do some better fiscal planning moving down the road. And as we get used to the leased buses and we kind of see the patterns of repairs or the patterns of preventive kinds of activities, we can better predict what the budget needs are of any of the buses as we go through. And I think that really ties in with exactly what the Capitol Committee was asking of us when they originally brought up the idea of leasing the buses and conceiving the plan and then what the maintenance would be. And the fact that we thought the maintenance would be somewhere around $4,500, maybe $5,000 versus the high levels that we were getting when buses are 17 years old. And so that's why I thought that this document that I gave you was great. Because this, starting now, July 1st, this will be really the best way to track what we're spending in labor, what we're spending in parts and where we're spending it. We can now break it down and look at the new buses and see if the new buses are really living up to our expectation of those lower prices. We can already see our old bus, our 2010 buses, cost us a lot of money. And we might have to look at, do we need to replace that while we're in the cycle of a lease and add in another bus? Is that permissible, things like that? But this would really help us to understand what our costs are moving forward and it will allow us to honor what the Capitol Committee asked us to do by trying to modify what our maintenance plan would be for the buses. That's the reality. So one of the things that we did is we put together a forecast by option. It included what would be a salary, any stipends, that's on page seven, the stipends, any other additional fees. One of the things we put in there, so for instance, under option one, you have a salary, you have a stipend, and you have a health plan cost, which is not something we have on option two A or option two B. We do not have to worry about a health plan cost for at least option A. Option B, we would. We also know there's a piece in there for worker comp, there's Medicaid. And then, we get to preventive maintenance. That would be for option two A, two B. And so we have put in a fee of $6,413 a year. That's based on three times of annual maintenance, whether it's with NET or First Student. The recommended time by NET was approximately two times a year. The recommended time by First Student was four times a year. So you'd think three. Let's be, let's call it down the middle and say three. We also looked at the maintenance personnel at DOT inspections. We put aside for option two A, $1,500, thinking about three times annually. Option two B, we set $500 August before the maintenance contract. And then, we looked at towing, equal across the board. We looked at snow plowing because originally, in our option one situation that we used to have the snow plowing was taken care of. Now, we have to take care of it ourselves. And then, a cost for a loaner bus, we had to look at the cost of insurance if we brought a loaner bus on and that would be under option two A or two B. And then, last but not least, we have some service hours and cost for tire replacement. So I thought it was kind of interesting. And this is just a rough estimate. So you can see if you did option A, we're looking at potentially spending $64,250. That would mean that we'd have somebody on call full-time. And really, when we say full-time, it's not really truly 24/7. We're really looking at more than eight hours a day typically. Option two A, if we were to use the onsite tech with First Student and use all the redundancy that we have, we're looking at 35, approximately, $35,763. And if we were to look at an upgrade NET contract and add a part-time maintenance person, which would run about 20 hours a day. NET contract and add a part-time maintenance person, which would run about 20 hours per week, we're looking at $40,309. So one of the things I did was, because I, I really want to be true and fair to the process, I want to be able to honor what the capital committee has asked us. I want to make sure that we're respectful and ensuring that students are safe throughout the year. So what I did is, based on what Dave brought me, I took a look at what if we had a full-time mechanic typically divided by 52 weeks, what it might have run us to pay that salary with the health benefits against what the labor costs would be, based on what we've had so far, and did just five weeks, because we're really only into August 11th. And it would require, as long as we're going to do a monthly update, I think it's a great exercise for us to do throughout the year to make sure that we're making the right decisions at all times, that we'll take care of our maintenance, honor the budget, honor capital, and look forward to other arrangements. So based on that, I took that, I took just the salary, the stipend, and the health benefits and added it up, divided by 52. So on average, we're talking about $1,213 a week approximately spent. And then I took a look at this and went, at six weeks, the labor cost, and this includes the old buses, so, and the old vans. So it doesn't selectively just take the new buses. I really think we have to look at all of them for the moment. But if we take a look at the labor, which is part of what that salary was, and we take the total cost of labor for everything so far, preventive and repair, it's $6,342. And if you divide that by five, we're at $1,268. So one is $1,213, and the other, it's $1,268. So you're talking about $55 difference right now in the first five weeks. Does that mean that can change? Absolutely. It can go up or it can go down, and it, we can be broken out according to if we just focus on the new leased buses and then the older vans, or we can do it in its entirety. But I'm trying to be fiscally responsible and honor what the committee is asking for, make sure that we ensure the students of Cohasset are safe because they clearly were not safe in the old buses last year, and we had gotten way too long without, you know, purchasing or leasing new buses. And at the same time, honoring the request from the capital committee that we secure the buses but reduce the maintenance. And I think that the only way we are going to be able to tell moving forward, because this was a high usage period, we were doing all of the inspections, and that requires a lot of manpower and a lot of time on top of anything else that needed to be repaired. There are going to be other times when it might be just the codes, or it might be something on the bus, but it's not going to require the five, six hours of maintenance a day having somebody there while we do the inspections. And I think by collecting that data and going over it monthly and breaking it up, that's really going to be the only way that we can get a clear understanding this year of what our parts are against what our labor is and what it's really costing us fiscally each week. So that's why I did this breakdown, and I took advantage of those figures to say, well, right now, this week, including the old vans, a $55 differential under the labor against what would have been a salary. And so obviously, I, I'm suggesting that we stay with option two A, onsite tech from First Student, work with the loaner bus from New England Transit, have the many levels of redundancy, and at the same time, continue to report to the committee monthly how it's going, based on our repairs broken out. And that, that is what I am strongly suggesting that we do. I realize this is an operating matter. I realize as a committee, you want to honor and respect the community by making sure that you have accepted it and feel comfortable with it. But I feel that if we're going to do diligence, that we stay with option two A for the year.
I just wanted to mention something about the old buses.
Yeah.
Because I think Barbara said that they weren't safe, but they were. She didn't mean that, but I just didn't want it to be in the paper, because they were always, they wouldn't run if they were not safe, because they were inspected three times a year
Right.
by the DOT.
And they were maintained.
And they were well, well-maintained.
Absolutely.
But I just wanted to be.
But I was thinking the rust factor, that we had become so concerned by not meaning that the loaner was willing to come out.
I just don't want, I don't want people to think that we didn't.
Absolutely right. No, 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 no.
Transport this children safely.
Right.
Because we did.
Yeah, and the buses would not have passed inspection if they couldn't be on the road.
That's correct, yes.
So let's make that clear. But we were concerned about the level of rust that was coming onto the buses, and, you know, at some point, they were just not going to run any longer. So we want to make sure that the kids are truly safe, and we know they are now. Jenny?
So first off, I want to thank you and Dave for digging in. I know that even in the last two weeks since we talked about this last, you guys had three kind of significant meetings with First Student, with Steve's, and then more follow-up conversations with NET. So I commend you guys for digging in. You know, for me personally, the, the chart that kind of lays out the vendors and what their capabilities are on page six really summarizes for me why we headed down this path, which was looking at building redundancy into our model and, you know, creating a number of options where we didn't have reliance on a single point of failure. But in this case, we're going to have two primary relationships, as I see you recommending. New England Transit, because they are a lessor, and they can do not only the warranty, but if the bus is in for the warranty, we can also, they've also agreed to do the routine maintenance if it's kind of needed within a couple-week period. And then the exploration, the conversation with First Student, I, I think was a, was a great one. And the ability of First Student to provide us either a fixed amount of hours should we choose to head that route, or really an on-call tech to come out, you know, whether it's twice a week or just when we have a series of issues that we need to get, is a really great option. And so between New England Transit, First Student, and then, you know, Steve's and Wilder Brothers, depending on the repair, and in some cases even Frederickson's, because they did do some repairs for the summer and it, and it worked out, you know, this for me really summarizes why we've headed down this path.
I, I also will comment that, you know, when we were at First Student, I know we mentioned this last time, but I'll say it again, that they have Freightliner a mile down the road as well as backup for them when they're not able to get through all of their work. So most definitely, I, I appreciate that. And I, I came home and said to my husband, "I think my next vehicle is going to be a bus," because I know more than I ever thought I would. But nonetheless, I, I feel really confident that, and if it would make the committee feel more comfortable, we can engage an onsite tech for the first few weeks of school just to make sure and see how it goes, and then sort of do a release model that if we're not really in need of that onsite tech, we have to come less frequently.
Yes, I think that might be a great idea, especially since we have a new coordinator who will just be getting up to speed, but that'd be kind of your first lifetime. I don't know how, we should ask you how you feel about that.
Well, I, I, excuse me. Do I need to, I'm Michelle Farfory. Am I doing this right?
Not right.
Okay. So the proposal right now, as it stands, is we're going to have a tech on-call, or we're going to have a certain number of hours? What was decided there?
It hasn't been.
It hasn't been.
But it's a recommendation. I'm saying that to open up school, if the committee would be comfortable, more comfortable, or comfortable having a calling up and working with First Student to have an onsite tech come the first few weeks of school, just to get the pattern and the rhythms, and make, and then do a gradual release if we find we don't need them. Take it out of the formula.
I have a couple of comments or questions. The first thing, and I'll investigate it further, but those bus, buses, even brand-new buses, get plugged in. There's a heater coil, there's water that runs through, keeps everything warm inside there so the fluids and so forth don't freeze. The way I understand it is only two buses can be plugged in at a time at the DPU.
No one's shown to be plugged in, as far as I know.
And they all show.
Well, I think last year, in the colds, you know, the cold winter, they weren't plugged in. We were able to start them up.
Right.
Without an issue, but.
All right, so that's something I think we need to investigate.
Okay.
Because if it's cold, you know, we'll start better if they have the warming element. My other comment would be that Nets, NET, have been fantastic. He's, you know, been very helpful in on-call when I've called him and so forth. So.
That's great. If I could just say a couple of things. I would opt, just personally, I would opt if we could have the technician on for a set amount of time, that would be, I would be comfortable with that. And I think we could also get a report then in our second meeting in September and see how all that has gone, and maybe hear from you, and have a better idea going forward. I have a couple of questions. How long is, does the code training take when you go up to MIT? Do you have any idea?
I don't. He's given me a little bit of a taste, and showing me where I'm going to look at things. And a lot of it's going to be me calling, "Hey, Steve, this is what it's saying." Okay.
That's fine.
And he's going to talk me through it.
We can always go back up again, I'm sure, with more training. So it'll be an ongoing type of thing, I think.
And depending on what we decide to do regarding the loaner bus, did we ever determine whether that's something we could, we didn't have to commit for a full year for, or how we wanted to handle that?
Well, I think you're really just committing to the, to the insurance and to the registration. So if you, if you commit to that, you probably should commit to the full year.
Okay, here. All right, here. I, I think for the first year in particular, while we're making this transition, it would benefit us to make sure we have that other, another level of redundancy or insurance for us.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see us with a loaner bus for the full contract.
Okay.
With NET.
Okay.
And that's just the insurance cost.
Correct.
Correct.
And then have we made any progress in terms of where we're going to park these beautiful maintained vehicles?
That is a next piece.
Okay.
I hope, I hope not.
Make one more comment. We could just sink a lot of money into the 2010 Bluebird.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason we did that is a particular model of the bus has, that first step is really low.
Okay.
And the newer buses don't have it, and there's two handicapped kids that access that bus, and it does make them stand out because they don't need a step stool to help them get on the bus.
Right.
So that's why that particular bus is very important for that particular route.
Gotcha. Helen?
If we're going to engage with First Student, have a tech onsite for the first however many days that we decide to have them on, maybe they can help with the code training, you know? Could, all the buses have been inspected, or they're not?
They're not going to have the code.
They're not going to have the code, okay.
That's Cummings Diesel, the engine.
Okay.
And First Student, they have buses, but they have different staff buses.
Okay.
They have Cummings train.
Okay. And my second question.
They know how to use the program itself, though, you know, which we.
Right, because the perfect world is, there's going to be no issues, and we're going to have a tech standing around talking with Missy.
Or, yeah.
So why not see if we can double dip a little bit, and if he's got expertise in code reading.
Absolutely understandable.
You know, so that's just where my mind went on that. And my second question is, on, are any of the, the amounts for the options part of, or are they on top of what's already been allocated in the FY16 budget for maintenance?
Well, the FY16 budget does not include any onsite tech or any staff number.
Right, but we did allocate. There's 31.
But there's money in it.
Yeah.
There's money.
$31,000.
Yeah, that, that was really for maintenance.
To be applied towards.
Yeah. Well, it's for maintenance.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it can go to anything that we needed to go to.
Okay, so the net of, so it's not 35 on top of the 31?
No, it, it is.
It is.
It is 35 on top of the 31.
It is 35 on top of, uh-huh?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So what would the 31 be used for?
Yeah.
Well, the 31 is, is for fuel and other maintenance-type items for the buses.
Oh, yeah. 30 for fuel.
We have 30 for fuel.
Yeah.
So we have 30, we have 31,000 budgeted for maintenance currently. And if you go.
Right, and I, I forget how we, we just divided that up by per bus, I think.
Well, we, we had in a previous presentation, it's the original presentation, for those of you that can remember it, back on July 9th, it's actually page nine, was the breakdown of the $31,000. I just want to step back a little bit on maintenance budgeting overall, because I think it's helpful to understand how we got to the appropriated number and what the implied maintenance was in that, in that capital budget appropriation. So in the capital budget appropriation, they assumed a leasing of seven buses at $16,500 per bus, which is $115,000, plus they assumed eight buses with routine maintenance at $4,500, which is $36,000 in routine maintenance, plus our 2010 bus with $15,000 of maintenance attached to that. And that bus is already, we've already spent five on it, so we're headed in that direction. So the total between the lease, the, the lease, the maintenance on the leased buses plus the new 2014 plus our 2010, that combined assumption was $166,860. They subtracted from that the $92,377, which was our FY15 maintenance number, and you can see that on the, on the budget to get to the net number that they funded in the FY16 appropriation of $74,483. They rounded it to $75,000. The reason I go through this exercise is that if you look at what the maintenance assumption was in the capital budget, there were two components of it. There was routine maintenance at $36,360, and the, the old bus at $15,000. So there was an assumption that we were going to have $51,000 in maintenance in our budget, and we don't have that. We have $31,000. So part of what we're talking about here in terms of the option two A is catching us up to where we need to be in terms of maintenance. And part of it is a First Student tech and being able to access that. And the scenario that was laid out here was accessing that on a six-hours per week. Okay? And then the second piece of it was upping the amount of, of maintenance dollars and doing the routine maintenance at the $6,400. So I, and I've said this before, our 31,000 that we budgeted is not enough. We need to, we need to come up with incremental funds in order to maintain the buses and keep our transportation safe. And so we know we're short.
Was that $31,000 based, too, on the assumption that we were only going to keep one of our old buses, and then we kept two? Or was that, did that happen after that? Remember?
Yeah.
The point is kind of moot now.
The, the point is kind of moot. I mean, you can play with, you can see how Dave and I worked the numbers to see how a scenario could play out of seven leased buses plus our 2014 at $2,000, not $4,500, and your 2010 at $10,000, and your mini bus at $5,000, to spend that $31,000. I mean, the answer, in my mind, is that we honestly didn't budget enough in terms of maintenance. And that's what we're facing right now, is making sure that we collectively understand that there's more money to be spent relative to maintenance.
Yep.
So it's incremental to the budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay. But, but it gets to the 31 and the 35 here at 66, and you said that the capital budget number was 51, so I mean, it's kind of in that original.
Number.
Number.
Yes, exactly. We're getting, what I would say is that the, the last six weeks of conversation has really clarified how we're, what vendors we're going to put behind the dollars. That to me is the real value of this exercise, is now we know operationally which vendors we're going to call for what, because the original plan of utilizing NET for warranty and Frederickson's or routine maintenance was just, it was, it was missing a number of solutions. And from, and as we talked about at least one or two meetings ago, it's managing the turnaround time, and in some cases minimizing it to same day with an onsite tech for those minor repairs, because you don't want to have a bus out of service for one to three days in Frederickson's or.
A headlight.
A headlight, exactly. And so it's that piece of it that I think we've spent a lot of time as a committee learning about how to manage turnaround time, but also the vendors that you need to back up the, the spending, that $50,000 of maintenance spending.
So with everything that's been stated, and just the fact that I feel that option two A really offers us the multiple layers of coverage in the event something goes wrong for backup, or multiple options in terms of people who can do warranty work. And then, of course, the, the last piece is the Cummins engine, and they're right in Dedham, and that's the last piece to add into this. So we feel com- So we feel comfortable with what we have. We're just going to investigate that another layer even, if possible. And hopefully next month when I'm sitting our report out on the Cummins visit. But that is just one more piece to be looking at. And then, of course, we're obviously hoping we don't have a terrible winter again.
I have a couple of questions. I missed a point that you were making. You said something about a credit account?
What I had said was that first student talked to us and said, you know, if they did warranty work and they were reimbursed from first student and it was, they reimbursed more than the work actually cost, there would be a credit in our account that they would put forward on the next bill.
Okay, and if we're utilizing, I will tell you, Tinsborough is not even in the picture for me for, for regular type maintenance. I think that that would be a mistake. So if we're utilizing first student, is there any kind of a, kind of a little bit of a glitch between NET and their offer of the loaner bus? If we're using first student or is that loaner bus because, is, is that loaner bus kind of like a goodwill gesture because we've had so many issues with the buses that we leased from them?
I think it's, it's more than just good, it is goodwill to a degree, but not.
I mean, obviously we pay for part of it, but.
Right, it's to help us through our first round of leasing.
The reason that I ask that is because when we were thinking about having, when we were proposing that that would be one option and we would use NET for everything, potentially, I thought it was very generous of them to offer us a loaner bus and a laptop. My question is, what are they getting out of this from us if we go mostly with first student or our needs?
I think it's gonna be a balance. I don't think we're always going to go with first student. They are available, but there is going to be time when there's warranty work. And as first student said, they're going to tell us if, if a bus ever broke down and it was warranty work, they're going to tell us when we should have it brought back to Tinsborough directly and not stop at first student for the, the work to be done. So there were situations where the buses will absolutely go back to Tinsborough. They won't stop anywhere else. And there'll be situations when we will send them to first student. And we sat with first student and went through a series of service provisions that they could offer us. Some of them are redundant to what NET can offer us. And in some cases, we will send the buses back to NET. And in some cases, we will take the buses to first student.
Also, the question under option two A where you have a salary budgeted here on this list of twenty five oh eight oh. And that's for the entire school year. For six to nine hours per week. So are you saying that we are going to budget that and commit to that as a contract? Or it's a pay as you go?
Pay as you go.
So maybe it would be twelve thousand dollars, in other words. But maybe it would be.
It could be more if we need to come twenty hours a week. And we hope that's never the case, but absolutely. It is not a commitment. First student was very liberal about providing and saying you could call, we'll come. Or if you want something more regular, we can do that. That's why I'm saying they were extremely flexible in trying to accommodate our needs and match it to NET. Because, of course, they have a great working relationship with NET. They're purchasing their buses from NET that they put into their fleet, so we know that they want this to work.
Well, clearly Whitman and Brockton and Stokely are more attractive than Tinsborough, so. The question is, where do we come up with this extra thirty five thousand seven hundred sixty three dollars? But we don't have it budgeted.
We're going to have to start looking. We are. I mean, there's no doubt it was under budgeted, so we're gonna have to start looking. And it depends on how the rest of the hires fall through, fall out, I don't wanna say fall through, they're not falling through, how they fall out as we do our hiring, whether there'll be a cushion from that. And again, as you brought out, if the tech is twenty five thousand and we only spend twelve, well, there's thirteen thousand that's going to take away from the thirty one and that you bring it down immediately.
Well, year two of the bus maintenance is better than year one.
Well, and you know, Jean, I totally agree with you. I think what's fantastic is that for the first time, we'll be able to, every single month, as a group, sit in a meeting here like this and we'll be able to look at. And I pray we never have to have a vandalism column item. I really do, because that would be a terrible waste of money. But I really think that this will allow us to look at the labor and look at the labor weekly against the parts of what we're spending and have a real clean cut. Just what is it that we're doing with the buses? And have a clean track that the committee will share, the community can see, capital committee will recognize that we are honoring their request.
And how many options do you have for parking the buses somewhere besides the DPW garage?
I think that's the piece we just have to conclude with right now.
Because we'll have to pay rent for that, so that's a hidden cost here?
Not necessarily. I'm not sure we have to.
Possibly.
Possibly. I think that we will have to look at that closely.
Katie?
I think on the, on the parking, I think that, you know, we have a rent free option right now. It has its limitations. And I think Missy pointed out one of them, which is there's only plugs for two of the oil pan warmers. You know, by moving to a different parking area, it allows us to explore putting electra to be able to plug in all nine or ten buses and eliminate future concerns about cold morning starts. It also allows us to do potentially some things like put in a fixed height broom, which eliminates roof rakes. So I do think there's value in exploring that conversation in addition to the fact that we've known for years that the DPW parking lot is congested, particularly in the winter. So if we were going to solve the parking problem, perhaps we start by solving the parking problem when the snow flies between December and April. And choose that as, if we're gonna pay money for a leased spot, that we solve it when it's worst at the DPW space is just one thought. But we would be doing, we'd be doing the parking to solve a longer term problem, not an immediate problem. I mean, we've been living with that problem for years and years. Kick that can down the road. I think there's many reasons why we should look at it.
All right, any more questions? No? Okay, then can we wrap this discussion up?
So as I said, I just, I, I really feel that looking and using option two A with the onsite tech for first student and loaner bus from New England Transit is really our best option for this year as we continue to collect data.
But I just, I like to follow Mary's point and just ask that you and Dave coordinate with Missy around what you think the needs are for the first couple of weeks with first student.
Absolutely.
And agree on that. But I think, I agree with Mary on that point, that spending a little bit of extra money upfront to make sure that one's moving.
And it will give a, you know, our, our feeling is it will give comfort. That's why I was making that recommendation. And you might find you need somebody six hours every week. Or you might find you can do a release model where you say, you know what? You can bring it down to four, bring it down to two, or might have to bring it up more during the course of the year when maybe the winter comes in. But have some ability to fluctuate as you need it.
Was that twenty five thousand based on six hours, nine hours, or something in the middle?
Six. It was based on six.
Six, okay.
So. It could be a little, that's what I'm saying. It could be a little more, it could be a little less.
Okay.
So. All right?
Thank you again for all that relationship building and trudging around.
I'm telling you, I never knew so much about the Magic Treehouse stories. They're gonna have so much more meaning now on this week. Magic School, it's been a while.
Magic School.
Sorry, it's been a while since I've had my kids so young. All right, you asked for an update hiring status. I know that there were some emails passing around. And so for our families who may still have the question and didn't know, it has been answered. There's a question as to whether we hired the two second grade teachers. And I know Jean got the email and I got the email and I answered. The two second grade teachers were hired, signed, sealed, delivered back in July. Done. I've been to their classrooms. So for any second grade parents that didn't hear that, hopefully they're hearing it tonight. We had a resignation just forty eight hours ago for grade one. And so Mr. Lecount and I are meeting on Friday about it. I don't think we'll have any trouble filling it. There's still a number of candidates that we would have liked to have hired for the second grade position.
In the grade two, yeah.
Who are still available.
It's all the same certification, so that's all right.
That we will look forward to having at the table for an interview for the first grade position. So I don't really think, it might, the hire probably won't happen till next week. But I feel really confident it's not gonna be an issue, because we do have a number of very good candidates. We had hired for the middle school science position and the woman accepted. And right after she accepted, she had tremendous family illness take place in her family and she withdrew. So that job has been posted again and they're in the middle of interviewing. So I don't have a candidate for that yet. I'm also meeting with Mr. Lecount on Friday. He is still interviewing for the music position for Osgood. We have a number of ESP positions. Do you know how many?
I think we are down to two at this point.
Left to fill?
Left, well, they'll be filled quickly. I think part of it is that Mary Buchanan's on vacation for the next few days. So we can't finish up. So. And right now, as of this moment, that is where we, oh, we have a P, an OT, a part-time OT. Sorry, she was my last one, because I interviewed today.
Okay, and what about, oh, I'm sorry, Ellen?
I was just gonna ask, do we, did the grade one resignation, did that teacher go to another district? Do you know?
No, stayed home for children.
Okay.
I do have a question and a little broader, maybe. Would it be possible, in the, in the same way that Carolyn Connolly has talked about conducting exit interviews where appropriate with students that leave the district, to get a little bit of information where appropriate that could be shared with us about why teachers perhaps leave the district? Which would be interesting to.
In this case, I can say it was a family need for children. That, that decision was made, the person will not be working. So they're not moving on.
And what is the status on the interviews for the deputy CIO?
We did, on Tuesday, we did interviews and we're coming to some conclusions to see if we can make an offer.
Okay, how many candidates were in that pool?
We actually interviewed.
The final pool?
Yeah, we actually only brought it down to two. So, and Ron Menard and I, and along with myself and the committee, there was Brian Scott, there was Cassie O'Brien, there was Louise Demas. And we, it was great having Ron at the table, because he can get very technical in a way that when we were technical, we could never be that technical. So we are down, we had these two and we're drawing conclusions now.
In all of these discussions about money and where we're going to find it, what is the plan for the salary that was budgeted for the school resource officer that we now have a grant for?
Actually, it, it was funny, because Bill Quigley wrote and said, we didn't get it. They, they did not, I had heard they voted it and Bill wrote and said they did not vote for it. It, it's on the town side, so it does not impact us at all anyway for this year for salary. Either way, whether the grant is voted in or not voted in or vetoed, the money will come from the town side for this year.
Well, and it was my understanding it had been moved over to the town side prior to.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
It is, yes, yeah.
Absolutely. So even if the grant came through for a hundred thousand dollars, and I think there's been about sixty eight thousand dollars budgeted, the town would get the rest of that money to do whatever they need to do that fits that grant criteria. We would not see any of those dollars. If, if that's what you were trying to figure out, what happens to the approximate thirty two thousand dollars? That would be town side.
Oh, no, no, I was wondering about the salary. Did we?
I think.
It's not in our budget.
It's not in our budget. I believe that town manager.
The town manager.
Is about sixty eight thousand.
Right.
February. So, yeah, it's not our budget.
Right, right.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, not in that section.
Okay, anybody else? Questions? No. Okay. Next item is status of the new website. We have a training next week, all day the eighteenth, all day the nineteenth, all day the twentieth. All of the principals will be in attendance, the assistant principals will be in attendance and obviously central office. We're going to have also our two administrative assistants participate, so there'll be enough people to help roll the content. School wires are saying that at the end of the training, if we have done our work in advance, that we should be able to roll approximately ninety percent of the content over. And what the administrators have been doing this week is looking at templates. And one of the biggest things we have to do is get some fresh photos. So I, I actually gave your name, because I know you take so many, oh, yeah, pictures. I said, ask somebody if they needed athletic photos to tap you.
Okay, that's fine.
And we were looking at who we could tap in the PSO, who we could tap in the CEF, who we could tap in the students and the yearbook and everything else. And then moving forward, we, the, this website will have photos in it, enough photos that we're gonna have to refresh on a regular basis, so we're going to have to have a collection. And I really felt that would be a great thing, to have the high school students take charge of as much as possible where they do the photography work and submit it to us. There might be some things they can't, but it would be great to have them working on it.
You do have some student photographers who post on the Spinnaker Facebook page.
Yes.
Of all like, you know, the Spirit Week and, you know, at the high school level. I'm not sure about the lower school level, but.
And this will allow us to do more seasonal, so in the fall, we can have football or soccer or field hockey. And in the winter, switch out to ice hockey and basketball, as, and we're doing sports. And then we have so many activities between the concerts and art projects and other, and Spirit Week and other kinds of things that are happening in the schools that we should be able to get a bulk of photos fairly quickly.
Just one question. You had mentioned the two central office admins attending training. Was there any thought given to either the Deer Hill, like Joni Mead or Judy? Are they going to be attending training?
They're not going to be here. My understanding is that particularly Joni is not available next week. So it will take us training, sort of do the train, the trainer. So there are gonna be some people that we are going to have to share out with. But I needed to get a core of people who really knew. And then we have to decide whether we're each individually going to do it or we're going to assign somebody a stipend to do it. That's what it will come down to. And because we don't know yet the level of, of labor involved as we go through and, and moving forward after that, we have to make a determination.
Because that, that was kind of where I was headed with the question, which is usually, at least with the, the kind of tool that at least I saw in that demo, you can break up, it's not a single webmaster. But, you know, there's different sections that you're gonna, that you're gonna declare a webmaster for. And I'd, I'd hate to see Jennifer DeGiaro become the webmaster for Deer Hill, which is why I asked the question about admins. And if Joni isn't available, certainly Train the Trainer will work. But I think potentially getting as many of those building secretaries at training next week, you know, to the extent they're available, could be very helpful. Or, or somebody that you could envision longer term being the webmaster for Osgood or Deer Hill or middle high school.
Yes. So we, we have submitted all these names and we know not everybody's going to be at the table all three days. I know I am, and there's a number of people who will be. But at the very least, we submitted everybody's names so that the accounts will be ready. And right now, we're doing Excel spreadsheets, so you could do searches. So sometimes you open up a website and, of course, in our current website, you have to go to the school and then go to the faculty section and then there's a list of faculty. And sometimes you can click on their names and they work, and sometimes you can't. In this case, I've asked for the search feature. So if you're looking for a faculty person, you would put their name in the search feature and then it would pull them up. So they'll pull up their name, what their position is, what their email is, what their school is.
As long as you know the name. Will it still be a listing in case you don't know?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, yes. Every school will still have a, a page that has the faculty. But if you got to the page and you needed to find Dave DeGiaro really quickly and rather than going through it, type his name in the search, click, and then it will pull it up from the business section, central office.
Or you had to literally, I did this, looking for. You had to go to each of the individual, you had to search middle high school.
Right, yeah.
Osgood to find.
None of them, not even.
Or not.
Right, well, and that's the other piece that I have said that I really want is some uniformity so that it looks, I mean, I realize there's more faculty at the middle and high school levels than there are at Deer Hill and Osgood, but we need to have some kind of uniformity. So when parents start at Osgood, it continues on. And whether the high school will do it by subject or do it alphabetically remains to be decided when we get to the table next week. But there has to be some way to pick it out a little bit more easily.
You know, once you, once you get through training and, and you get a comfort level, I'd, I'd love to see, come back to the committee, a plan that maybe Carrie Sandler develops around the webmaster matrix in terms of who's responsible for what.
Yep.
So lay out the overall structure of the website. And it doesn't have to be down to the individual page level, but, you know, at a building level or, or maybe the next level down, who's gonna be responsible for updating the content? So give us the, the webmasters for that level.
Is Ron Ford gonna be there?
Ron Ford.
For the athletics?
No, not yet. We did not invite him to the table for this part. We can't, we also, Ron Menard is well aware this is going on as well.
Okay.
So. We wanna get the initial contact. I mean, it's easy enough to include. So, we want to get the initial contact, I mean, it's easy enough to include Ron for sure, but we hadn't included him in the initial runway. Would you like me to invite him at all?
No, no, that's fine, no.
Any more questions?
Um, oh, yes.
Sorry, so Barbara, you had said that, um, the company had said that as long as you have your homework done, ninety percent of the content will roll over. Ninety percent of the content from the existing website or ninety percent of the content that everyone is currently preparing?
Everyone's currently preparing, which is pretty much the face pages, pages of all the schools. And getting in the faculty and getting in, um, the calendar and moving all of those types of information. They've sent us a list of everything they want us to bring with us.
Okay.
As, and there's movies that we have to watch. I'll be honest, I have not seen my movies yet, although others have started. I've seen a number of parts to it. Everybody has, um, instructional guides, and they even gave us little homework packets to fill out workbooks. But nonetheless, everybody, anything I've been given, everybody else has been given. They've been given passwords and user names and so forth to get right into it.
Is the thought that we're going to keep the, to start off with the new website with current only? Or are we gonna migrate all the archived information?
The goal is to archive, to migrate it.
Okay.
What needs to be mi- there might be some things you don't want to move over.
No, but district report cards and meeting minutes and things like that should all be archived, okay?
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, and when do you anticipate it to be launched?
Uh, I'm still working that out with the company in fairness, so we'll have a better idea next week.
Okay. So we've signed a contract and it's all a go, it's all a go?
Yes.
And they're paid in waiting for our content.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, you said the word calendar.
Uh-huh.
So off topic just for a moment, um, do you know what the status is of, is there going to be a PSO calendar?
Each school is going to have their own calendar. There is going to be a central calendar on the-
No, 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 I mean the, the, the regular PSO calendar.
There'll be a regular calendar.
Are they, they working on that this year?
Oh, you mean for what? Yes, yes, it's at the printer.
Okay, great. And so then that leads me to my next question. Will the, one of the limitations of the existing website is that there is no district calendar capability.
It will be one.
So there will be one, there will be a monthly page that will have different things? Or do we have to go to each individual school to see what's going on in the district?
We can choose how we set this up. So one of the things there is, there, there'll be, my goal is to have a place where you click on that has calendar and it shows a whole month at a time, and you go forward, you go backwards. There's also going, depending on which template we finally wind up with, although we are leaning towards one where there, there's a little calendar of, of like a week's worth of dates on the left side of the page, it gives what's coming up that week.
Kind of like the town website.
Something similar, yes.
Yeah.
So that there'll be that. And then each school has the ability to put in calendars as well.
Okay. And it's going to be mandatory that these be updated on a regular basis, right?
Oh, God, I hope daily.
Because, I mean, there's been such a disconnect. The PSO calendar is fabulous, but we've had so many changes.
Then you have a snow day, it's over.
Exactly. So it's, it's all a moving target all winter long.
Yeah.
And it's, personally, I like to be able to go to various events in the different schools as a member of the school committee. I've done it all along, the whole time I've been here, but this year was such a challenge.
Yeah, we didn't get out of the driveway.
Exactly.
Sarah McSweeney was in last week, I believe, and it was on its way to the printer.
Okay, great.
So-
Thanks.
But that's part of like, once we know who the webmasters are, they're, they're on for charge.
It'll be part of their charge.
It's part of their charge. And I think that's why that webmaster piece is so key in terms of-
Absolutely.
If I've discovered anything I don't understand, I just ask my sixteen-year-old, who can send me right through. So, any other questions?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, next item is a flood update and community room status. And so, um, some of you were in there today, and you can see they tiled in the last two days. And, uh, so that is now done. That was one of the last remaining things that they seem to have left off the list, and we demand that they come back and fix. So the floor has been lifted and the new floor has been laid, and they have put, obviously, the, uh, edges-
Co-op base?
Yeah. Along there, and, uh, the tables are in place. So what's left is, on August thirty-first, Comcast is coming to fix what's not working now. We will presume that they'll be done on the thirty-first, and we can have our meeting there on September second, but we will only know when they're done on the thirty-first, if that's the case. So for the September second meeting, we'll post it for the community use room. And in the event that they are unable to fix the problem, which apparently there's a, a static or a buzz that's running through the sound system when you're listening as the viewer at home, uh, we'll know. If it's not going to happen, then we'll let the committee know. But that's the plan right now in place. And then beyond that, the furniture has come. Uh, if you haven't been in, you'll notice that the business, we have a business suite that, uh, Dave and Jane and Donna are down towards the community use room now. The, what used to be the conference room has become Jane and Donna's sanctuary. Uh, and they can do everything they need there, and then Dave is in the next office beside it. So it's forced us to get a lot of exercise in. We're gonna get one of those Fitbits now.
Yes.
So, but that's all taken care of. And they were upstairs, uh, in the last week also working and laying the new tiles. And they still have to do some painting.
I think they just have it done, or, or as I say, with the last day, or it was.
Aren't they just about to? Yeah. Yeah.
Now they have to all be waxed, you know?
Yep.
This is co-op based on up there?
I think it is, um, I think we finished today, I think Max checked.
Yeah, we have it back in.
That was the one missing, he said there was.
Yeah.
Right, I didn't look in the main office what it looks like. It was all pushed in the middle this week, and I think it's still there, but we ran out of time just locking doors to get out.
I, I didn't get a chance to see it today, but, um, I know the community use room was the last room they did.
So we'll look in the morning. Yeah.
So I'm assuming it's all done upstairs.
Okay. So, and then the, the last of the cleanup is really all we have left to do, just cleaning up. So, wow.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you had, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So you had, um, provided us earlier this month or the end of July with the reconciliation of expenses and insurance payments. Will we be able to get a final now that?
Yeah, um, I've just waited for a few more bills to come in, um, and then I have to submit them to the insurance company.
It'll be still a few more weeks. Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Give you an update.
The-
It may not be complete, but then, you know, we can update again.
Right.
Okay.
The biggest issue in getting a clean total is that some of the companies, like we built it, submitted directly to the insurance company. Those bills did not pass through our desk, so we don't know what was submitted.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't know that, um-
And we won't know.
Which is fine, I'm just interested really in the, the net differential.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Because I think on the last one, it was about sixteen hundred dollars, and, but that didn't have the forty-five hundred dollars for the cabinets that you would, you told me about, right?
Yeah, that's already been paid. It was paid a while ago.
But that was paid out of, out of budget. That wasn't part of the insurance plan.
Yeah, that's not part of the insurance.
That was paid separately.
Okay.
They had to rip everything out that we had, so we had no choice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I took the very cheapest, least expensive item that they had for the counter and the cabinets.
So that listing that we gave you, um, Ellen, was just insurance related?
Right.
Yeah.
Still have questions?
No, I was just, uh, sorry, my brain is starting to melt.
Not enough coffee.
Yeah, that Starbucks from four o'clock's wearing off. Um, that forty-five hundred, wasn't it in the prepaid?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, if there are no more questions, the next item is the enrollment numbers that I submitted to you. So what I asked Jennifer to do so you could see was the March numbers against the August sixth numbers. I cannot collect sixth grade and up until the guidance office comes back in where it's all listed. So I'm asking you to be patient about that. But at least you can see from March with, and this also represents a number of students who moved to other towns or moved out of state, or in some cases, moved out of country. But you can at least see the difference in numbers. Um, kindergarten full day had a leap, obviously first grade had a massive leap. I mean, a- across the board from K to five, you had a, a growth.
Mm-hmm. Katie?
So, the question that I had was, um, whether, in particular, let's just talk about the Osgood numbers. Does this reflect attrition from the district or are these just net, are these just adds?
This, this is everything, the students who have come up and the students who have enrolled and anybody who's moved in. It's all there together. But the students that have moved out. No, not off yet.
Right.
So that's some case, some of them, they might be out. But the tr- the cleanest number unfortunately will not happen, uh, until, the very cleanest number we get in the year is the October first number that we get from, we get and sent to the state. We don't begin to eliminate some of the students until they, we come back to school and the students haven't arrived. For students whose parents have notified us in records, those names can be deleted, but it's still not clean.
Well, here's my observation, a- and I think that, and this is a supposition on my part, but I looked at the June seventeenth numbers, and what I see happening versus, because I appreciate the overall growth from March to, to August, because I think it's important for us to see that, but I was also looking, the last update you gave us was June seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
What I see happening is at Deer Hill, they're absolutely subtracting out people. So at Deer Hill, third on Ju- Ju- June seventeenth was one thirty-seven.
Yes.
Fourth was one thirty-three, and, and fifth was one forty-five. So we had a net subtraction of twelve. So I think Jennifer's going through the, taking them out.
Yeah. Taking them out.
When I look at the Osgood numbers, all I see are increases. And so I see a plus, plus five since June seventeenth, zero for second, uh, for first grade, and a plus five. So is it possible there's a process differential between what's happening at Deer Hill and Osgood?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
There is. But I can check with, uh, Judy as well to find out or with Bob to see what they've taken out. Generally, they don't take out most of-
That's what I think is hap- I think Deer Hill is kind of circling better reality, and I really don't know where we are at Osgood, to be honest.
Okay, I'll check for you. No problem.
Um, I also would like to ask, I mean, Katie had to go back through her figures, through her past information
Mm-hmm.
to get that information, to get that data. So if we could perhaps have the projections done on a yearly basis, all on one spreadsheet, that would be great, yeah.
Right, and we did actually, yeah.
Exactly, we did actually, and we did have that before.
We did. I was just trying to get from the March to August so you can see what the cleanest representation was.
Yeah. Okay.
But we're happy to go back and do that. I just felt for today's, uh, point, as we're getting, closing in on school, I wanted you to have the freshest numbers we had.
Also, um, what is the status on rolling over I-Pass?
Already rolled.
It has?
Yeah.
So don't the-
Rolled over on Saturday.
Don't the numbers translate from I-Pass to the enrollment?
Not yet. Not, they, they couldn't match up because of when we got our data compared to when the rollout happened. We can collect our data on Friday, and the rollover happened on, over the weekend. So we'll have another roll, we'll be able to, the next meeting.
At the next meeting, okay.
Yeah. I just, I had to get my numbers when I got my numbers.
That'd be great, and then if you could do it in the other format for us, so that we can look at it month by month to see where the changes are?
Yeah. Yeah. Not a problem.
That would be great, yes.
And just for clarification, you use the March numbers as a benchmark because that's the budget?
The day you voted the budget, yep.
So it's, and, just so the viewers at home understand that.
Because we- Right, and we predicated our teacher numbers based on what we had in March.
Right.
So, you know, sometimes we find we have to hire an additional teacher. We have stood fast on doing that, the numbers have grown, that's all.
You're still very manageable.
We're very manageable, but, you know, that's why we brought up, and I'm certainly not making any changes, but I brought up the fact that there are more students now in a kindergarten classroom than there is in a secondary classroom.
But to, to Katie's point, it might be nice to have,
I'm not sure.
To have the Osgood and the, no, but to have the Osgood and the Deer Hill using the same tools-
Yeah, I agree. All right.
As we're going along. Yeah, I really, I, there's just something about the fact that Deer Hills have been, that, well, I've seen negatives, and I haven't seen a nega- I haven't seen a negative yet from Osgood that I really feel like we're not seeing the true number. We're only seeing adds, we're not seeing the subtractions of people moving out of district, and so-
Right.
Right. And I still know of a family with two kids to enroll, haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I, I just, I know that, I know there's, there's a lot of risk, but, um, again-
My note is still coming. What are they waiting for?
No.
Apparently, the end of August. Maybe they might move in the next three weeks.
Don't think so. But anyhow, at least you have an idea of where we are. Uh, and then the last thing I gave you, this was sent to me.
Yes, please explain this.
Yes. Well, Alicia Savage is the, um, is the head of the Selshore Charter Public School.
Yeah.
She's also a parent in the district. And what I sent you is, as you know, if you read in the news, that there is a request to lift the cap on charter schools.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's obviously more and more. When charter schools open, it does draw money off of communities. Like, we do have two students currently attending. At the last count, when I checked in with Mrs. Demas a few weeks ago, it was two students who are currently attending the Selshore Charter Public School. But as you can see, this was sent to me by Alicia because we're one of the districts that does participate in the charter school, and they are asking to increase their enrollment and with justification of why. And it's a big increase over the next few years.
Yeah, it's more than double.
Yes, and as a result, and you can see she's explaining why, um, that the increase would allow enrollment numbers openings by eight hundred and ninety over the next five years. So, you know, about a hundred and seventy-five students a year, uh, would be added into the school. And as it brought up, she said last year, eight hundred and eighty-one children were denied admission due to lack of openings. This year, eight hundred and sixty-seven. So she has moved forward to try to expand, expand the school and has submitted her information to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. What I offered to you is everything that was offered to us. I wanted you to see why they had their decision. Because if this does cap and if the numbers go up, we have a potential for losing more students on parent side. This is another kind of option that they would like to pursue, and of course, that takes money out of our budget.
Mm-hmm.
So I felt that I would rather you know in advance that this is happening than to read in the newspaper it happened and we start losing students and you say, "Why weren't we aware of this?"
So can, can you just clarify how we lose money out of our budget if students-
Where's the fair move, uh, because our, our state, chapter seven is-
Well, chapter, chapter seventy money would go down.
Based on our enrollment.
Okay.
State funding.
Based on that October number that we submit.
Right.
So if a number drops, so does that fund it?
So our reimbursement from the state will-
But this is just, this is just an, uh, another option.
Right.
Uh, like private options.
Yes, exactly.
Right, and it serves a variety of towns. It's, it's not going to take eight hundred children out of-
Many, many.
No, no, no.
And it's all on lottery.
But you never know.
It's all based on lottery. It's all based on lottery.
Yeah.
But if she, as you can see in her, her letter, the fact is that, you know, they're looking to go, uh, capacity of six-ten to fifteen-hundred. It's almost nine hundred students, and her waitlist has been approximately eight-eighty-one. And I don't know if any of those waitlisted students have been participants of the Cohasset Public Schools, but I felt I would be doing a disservice to the committee if I didn't inform you that this was taking place.
Has it been approved?
No. She submitted her letter.
Okay.
There were twelve students that applied from Cohasset.
Yeah.
And under this, if that were to happen, all twelve students would be accepted.
But they, they need to find, they, they need to find land before they can do this plan. And so predicated on all of this was a new campus, um, because on their existing campus they can't, and so there's a big discussion in this whole document about going out and looking for the right acreage and building within a certain price frame. So this isn't, but-
Won't be in this town, no.
No, won't be in this town, but it also, I just, in terms of the timeframe, it's certainly a couple of years out.
It could potentially be in a town that has built a new building, and their old building wasn't horrible, it was just not big enough for their population.
For what their needs were.
So with very little maintenance, you know, and improvements, they could, they could potentially look at something like that.
Absolutely.
And that would be a much quicker process for them than building.
Right, well, you can-
Because they have to raise money, or, you know, take a loan, and-
Absolutely, and you can see towards the back when it shows the expansion budget. I mean, they're, they build after fiscal twenty-one.
Yeah.
So we're still talking five years down the road. But it doesn't matter, it's still five years down the road, and the impact might be felt in five years, and I felt that the committee should be aware of it from the start, the inception of this process to the end. And if I should receive anything else, I will certainly share with you, but I felt you should be informed.
Right.
As taxpayers. So that's why that was included in your packet. It wasn't really to deliberate the merits of the expansion, but just to inform the district that chapter seventy could be impacted by participation in the program. Okay?
Okay.
So now I'm going to turn the table over to Dave, so we can do the warrant. Well, you can do the warrant, and he can do the budget summary.
Okay, so do we want to do the warrant first?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so I did review everything in warrant sixteen dash oh-three-S, and I would like motion to approve warrant sixteen oh-three-S.
Salute.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Katie Dugan.
I, Mary McGoldaugh.
Um, Ellen Marr-Ibstein.
Um, I, Gina Stino.
Thank you.
So take it away, Dave.
So your, uh, packet includes the, our end of the year budget as of June thirtieth. As you can see, we did expend our entire budget this year, as we usually do. We had some, you know, positive balances and negative balances, and that's actually broken out on the next page, uh, the end of year closing process. There really wasn't any, any surprises this year. We knew that, you know, we were short on utilities and things like that, but, um, everything worked out. Uh, we, we spent down our grants as appropriated and as, as they were written. That worked pretty smoothly this year also. Any of these balances in the revolving accounts will begin, will be the beginning balance in the FY sixteen, uh, budget. So when you see that report come through, you'll see, you'll see the ending balances and now the opening balances. Uh, we do take out, um, the encumbered amounts when we roll over the accounts and, and the revolving accounts, so, so for instance, the, the, um, athletics, that sixteen thousand three sixty-nine balance will be sixteen thousand plus the twenty-one thousand, that's encumbered. That'll be the beginning balance in FY sixteen, but that twenty-one thousand will be spent.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna add-
So we're gonna add that in.
And you'll just add a new encumbrance, and you'll roll the encumbrance over.
Right, we're not adding funding, we're just adding the new balance without the encumbrance.
Yeah, you have to show the real balance in the, in that line item.
Yeah, so-
So it'll be added to that.
So the real balance will be thirty-seven thousand dollars, and then-
Right, and then you'll see that, that, you'll see that that twenty-one thousand has been expended after the new balance, you know what I mean?
Yeah, in, in our July report, you're gonna show encumbrances, or you're gonna show, uh, that being spent year to date.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Spent year to date FY fifteen, or FY sixteen?
FY sixteen.
So what is being spent?
So that twenty-one thousand six hundred is being spent. It, it's already, I think it already has been spent, it was uniform, football uniforms, and then the storage, the, um, mobile storage units. So you don't see the expense in FY fifteen, you'll see the expense in FY sixteen. But in FY fifteen, we encumbered so that we could process the, the ordering of the, of the items. Make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions? More comments on Mr. Dean?
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
So we came in a little under on unemployment last year, which is great.
What was budgeted for this, for FY sixteen?
The same amount.
Fifty or forty?
Fifty.
Okay.
No, fifty, the seven, fifty, yeah. We may see that go up this year as well. We've already had a couple of people already, uh, apply for it, yeah. And then next item on the agenda is, is the, um, end of year balances, um, of how we, how the end of the year was spent, with the different costs, cost centers and accounts. So you can see the positive and the deficit balances at the end of the year, that totaled about two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, five-hundred-and-nine dollars. And with that, we prepaid special ed out of district tuition. And then beyond that, we had some remaining funds in the, um, supply accounts, supply material accounts of about eighty-eight thousand. So we did prepay supplies and materials using that money. We actually prepaid more than the eighty-eight thousand, we prepaid about a hundred and four thousand. So above, you see a deficit of fifteen thousand eight-one-five that's part of that, two-ninety-five-oh-nine on top.
So the, the eighty-eight, two-fifty-two, plus the fifteen, eighty, eight-fifteen is the one oh-four oh-seven?
Eight-fifteen, right. Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 yes.
Just one question, um, I, I looked at the, um, the forecast you provided earlier, and the, the most substantial change from April to the actual year-end closing was around the special ed out of district tuition.
Right, yes.
You had previously forecasted at one-sixty or one-fifty-nine, and the actual number was two-seventy-six, eight-eighteen.
Because we had circuit breaker funds that we, we hadn't used up to that point.
Haven't they come after?
Well, they come in quarterly.
They come in an odd way.
But this was actually from the last year that we had to use up, or it would be, it would be taken away from us. So when I put this forecast forward, I didn't include that circuit breaker amount of money.
Okay.
So what we did was pay tuition through circuit breaker, which freed up more money in the budget for tuition.
And you used up the circuit breaker because it was going to expire.
Expire, right.
Okay, gotcha. And that freed up, okay.
Yeah, so that freed up. So that, the two-ninety that we prepaid, um, we already need about one-twenty of that, as we see it today, for right now, um, because of the changes that happened this summer and the end of June. So that two-ninety is really not all, you know, freed up like we would like to see that happen, but, um, it's really about one-seventy that, that is available to us in the closing year.
Well, it's tricky too, because that's the only item that's really on a pay-it-forward schedule.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
I don't hear anybody else? No?
Actually, can we have a vote on that? We usually vote on that.
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll have to.
Oh, it does say vote needed.
Yep. Okay, so could I have a motion to accept the end of year balances and the closing, um, of the books on fiscal year fifteen?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Katie Dugan.
I, Mary McGoldaugh.
I, Ellen Marr.
I, Gina Stino.
Okay, so the next section is school committee comments and communications. So I don't, I don't think anybody has a report from any subcommittees right now, but I will tell you that there is an alternative energy committee meeting on the seventeenth that I plan to attend, that, um, we're looking forward to a great presentation that could have some welcome surprises on our roof. So, yeah, so it's good news.
It's good.
Um, on the tech committee front, I, I met with Louise, um, uh, last week to talk about what the schedule would be. We originally anticipated having a meeting at the end of August. Um, we decided to postpone it until after the start of school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one, because the date we had kind of circled wasn't gonna work for Ron, um, because we had kind of calendared it before we arrived, and second, we wanted to have the WBCIO on board, so I just wanted to let you guys know that, um, that is, that is in process, um, but we did delay it deliberately so that we could have our two tech people available.
Great, and there's so much going on the last two weeks before school starts, too, it's a little crazy.
So, and I think, I think we discussed this at one of the last meetings, I'll take Katie's spot as the liaison to the digital learning committee as she stepped into negotiating, yeah.
That's great. Um, can we get an updated list, uh, once Barbara steps in, um, maybe we can have an updated list, because there may be some subcommittees that she might like to participate with.
So maybe for September or September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like CPAC. So if you could actually put that list in our packet for next time and the time following, so we'll wait and see what happens. Yep, we're still here.
So you, you want it for eight-
Could you put it in the next packet?
Eight nineteen and nineteen.
Yes, please. In a little bit. Okay, and, um, just for the committee's information, at the end of each agenda, I've asked Barbara to include this section called follow-up and updates. So we have a tracking mechanism for items that, I mean, I scribble things all over my agenda at every meeting, and I'm afraid things might get lost in the shuffle, and sometimes when I do my minutes review, I say, oh, shoot, three months ago, we said we were gonna revisit that, and we haven't revisited. So this is just for us as a little touch point, so that we can kind of keep on task for these things.
That's great.
Okay? And at some point, we may actually type it into the agenda, I don't know, I haven't figured out exactly how to use it, I just know that we need a, a little place, like a bookmark, that we can keep track of these things.
To-dos.
Yep, exactly. Okay, so we've done that. School committee meeting schedule. There has been so much on the agendas lately, and so many business items, that I wanted to approach the committee and ask if you would be amenable to shifting our schedule a little bit and possibly holding meetings every other week. Effectively, it doesn't add that many meetings to the yearly schedule, but it does impact people's lives, and, you know, we should all figure that out together on whether or not we want to do that. So what are you thinking? I really don't love this back-to-back thing, and we've had, I, what, four meetings in a time that we weren't supposed to have, maybe one? So, you know, if we don't have a need to have them, then that's one thing, but we also have this handy-dandy little list that Barbara gave us, um, that kind of shows us what needs to be done when.
Is it possible to review, and I don't know that tonight is the night to do it?
No, I'm just bringing it up, I want people to think about it.
But to review this and ma- I mean, I wonder if it's as simple as adding, you know, we're maybe talking about adding two or three meetings over the course of the year.
And that's what I think, but I think-
But finding the best spots for, I'm, I'm reluctant to shift the meeting dates that we already have.
Well, we can look at it and see how it would work.
Unless we, you know, just depending on how the schedule goes.
Right. This is just like brainstorming and thinking out loud, because I think that we need, I really don't want to be here till eleven o'clock twice a month.
No, and I don't think we're really that productive after about nine-thirty, so.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So if we can have three, shh, instead of two, two giant meetings, if we could have three that are like two-thirds of the size, I think it would be more productive. So just think-
So because of that proposal, just so you know, so you're scheduled to meet on September second, and if it's every other week, you're also scheduled to meet on September sixteenth, I believe.
Uh-huh.
Then you would not have met on the twenty-third or the thirtieth, so now you would meet on the thirtieth. But then you would not skip the next one, you'd go right to the seventh, so in the course of, uh, seven weeks, you're gonna have five meetings it will be, because you'll have the second, the sixteenth, the thirtieth, and the seventh.
It may not make sense to-
So, I mean, that's for you to figure out, but just-
It may not make sense to keep the meetings, so I think we need to reorganize our meeting schedule.
So that's the only reason why I'm pointing it out, because then you have the seventh and the twenty-first, and you skip, and you're fine, but you have the fourth, but you changed it, I know, because of M A C, you're off the eleventh, you're on the eighteenth. So some of the months are better than others.
Yeah, and then you get into the vacation months, and it's-
But just so you're aware, the first bubble is gonna be September into October.
Right, and I, I really want people to be aware also that this, this meeting schedule, if we see one that's really heavy, then, then maybe we'll, yeah, it is, but it isn't.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it's doable.
Okay.
I really do.
All right.
It was better than adding half of them to tonight, that's why we added the meeting on the nineteenth, because there are some things there that really need to be discussed for the nineteenth, so we'll, we'll figure it out as we go along. But I, I, I'm just asking the members to have an open mind, that we potentially will be changing our schedule a little bit. And it may only end up being maybe four meetings over the course of the year that are additional, I don't know, because of the vacations and the holidays and things. But I'm just thinking that maybe we could be flexible and work all that stuff out. Okay? All right, so that's all I had to say about that, so see, it wasn't so bad. And then, um, the new member search update, for those of you, um, who in the studio audience, um, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, um, last night, and we went through the process that we had followed to search for a new member, to fill our empty seat, and that included notifying residents on all the school community on Blackboard Connect, which Barbara has told me that you have been added, that the two of you have been added to Blackboard, so that you'll get all the messages going forward.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't, tell me.
Yeah, so maybe, so maybe we could do a little bit of a touch, the first couple of messages that go out, just to make sure, you know, check in with the members who are no longer on the current enrolled students list, and make sure that they've received their messages. So we put out a message to the entire community on Blackboard Connect. We put an ad in, a, a piece in the Cohasset Mariner, in the print and, um, online editions, and was there another, oh, and on the town website.
Yep.
On the town website. And we're delighted to report to the community that we had five stellar applicants. Um, we had selected one member of our board and one member of the Board of Selectmen to look through the resumes and look at some characteristics that we had developed as what we were looking for in a member for the school committee. And, you know, they looked at the five candidates and came up with two, and there is one person who we feel, one person that we are going forward with, um, who will be at our next meeting, hopefully, um, she's had some, she's had a personal issue come up this week, so we'll hopefully do that at our next meeting, and the first half hour at six-thirty to seven, we'll be joint with the Board of Selectmen to make that appointment. So does anybody have any questions? No? So I think that that's all we need to talk about on that, and I also mentioned the alternative energy committee meeting on the seventeenth, which will be great, but we also have a policy that we need to do a second read on, and if we're all in agreement, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Alternative Energy Committee need our signatures on this policy, so that we can move forward in the process of being qualified for the Green Community Act, Green Community, um-
Designation.
Designation, exactly, thank you. I think nine o'clock's not working for me tonight. Um, so we read it at, we read it briefly at our last meeting, but basically it, it, did everybody read it thoroughly this time? Because I just kind of summarized it at the last meeting. But it basically states that in an effort to reduce the town of Cohasset's fuel consumption and energy costs, the Select Board and School Committee hereby adopt a policy to purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles to meet this goal. Um, and the purpose of this is to establish a requirement that the town of Cohasset purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal and local public school use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. Most of the vehicles that we need in the district don't apply, this policy doesn't apply, but if we were, say, to purchase a small, well, I, I don't even know that the sped man would, would qualify, to be honest with you. Chris, do you?
It actually says that cargo vans are exempt from-
It does say, car, it's cargo vans that are exempt, buses obviously are exempt because they don't have fuel-efficient models.
Passenger vans.
Passenger vans.
Passenger vans, yeah.
So it's, it's in an attempt to kind of cross the Ts and dot the Is that we're making sure that we're doing our part to have this in place, and the Board of Selectmen has already signed off on it. So I would like your thoughts. Oh, this page is wrong.
Oh, with the signatures?
Yes, the signature page in here is wrong, Barbara, and that's, I should have mentioned it. Maybe what we can, well, I think that what we can do maybe is, um-
You could, you could vote, if you, you could vote to approve it, and you could sign it later.
Okay.
Or maybe we could just come into Town Hall and sign it.
Sure, sure.
That's great.
Okay, so what is the committee's feeling on this? What do you think about it? Are we ready to vote on it?
Yes.
I think it's fine, too.
Yeah, I read it twice.
Okay, so what we could do, since this is a copy, do you have whiteout?
Do we?
I do.
Yep.
Well, I have some in my purse now. Okay, Mary Poppins. I do have a friend who was scared of her when the-
Do you have, they were thorough because of-
Okay.
That's incredible.
So if we could just photocopy this, I just want to get it done and off our plate, So if we could just photocopy this, I just want to get it done and off our plate so that we don't have to be coming back running into town hall to sign things. If we could make a photocopy of this last page so that we can sign a clean copy, that would be fabulous. Yeah.
Do you have a staple remover in there too?
Yes, it's called a finger nail.
Could you, could you run a?
Yeah, I'm gonna fix that. I'm left-handed, those other ones don't work for me. I break it every single, I, I take a new one out, I use it once, I have to throw it away.
Oh, because it all runs on your hands?
It doesn't, it doesn't work. So I need this straight thing. So next time I need some whiteout.
There's a chain of stores called Lefties and they do all.
I wonder if they flip those thick ones because those thick ones are light for me. So do we need a motion to approve? Yes, we do. So we have a motion to approve the alternative energy policy for green community qualification process.
I will make a motion to approve the alternative energy policy for green community qualification process.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
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 I. If one click comes back, we'll pass it around and sign it. So you know what follow-up and updates is about? And then do we have any topics that were not reasonably anticipated prior to the meeting? I think, I think we have a lot of things on this page.
I think we covered a lot.
Yeah, I think we did too. Okay, at this point in time, well, here, we'll sign this first and then it'll all be official and I'll give it right to you, Chris, I'm in charge, okay?
I should really give it to Tracy, it's safer that way.
I don't understand, I'm trusting you. That is how.
I won't lose, I'll perimeter discount. So you won't lose?
Jean?
Yes.
Is it appropriate to go back to a previous topic?
Sure, we can do that.
I was just thinking on the bus maintenance log, one final piece of data that might be helpful would be days out of service on each of the buses.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
I thought I'd do. Give credit for having that file at nine ten.
I know.
And she didn't have coffee before.
Can I use your black?
Oh, I did have one question.
Yes.
We had talked about having a scenario where perhaps we could meet the new teachers or the new teachers could come to one of, it may not be that easy for them to come to a meeting, obviously depending on where they live.
Well, there is a day that.
There is opening day.
Yeah.
We were luncheon. We were, we were looking to possibly invite them for the September second meeting, but I can't answer if the.
Well, I can totally understand if that's not doable.
It's their first, you know, few days, but we'll see what we can do.
Is it possible to include the school resource officer in that kind of an event or whether there's a luncheon?
I think Jean wants to have him on the agenda on September second. He was actually ready to come next week, but she put it down for the second, so we pushed him out of the way.
Okay, great.
All right. So I think we're good. I need, we do need to return to executive session for purpose number four to discuss the deployment of security devices. And if I could have a motion.
So we, will we be entering?
And we will, will.
So enter adjourned?
Yes, we will coming back into regular session just for the purpose of adjournment.
So I'll make a motion to enter into executive session. After so doing, we will adjourn for the sole purposes.
Leaving.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I. You need a roll call.
I, Katie Dugan. I, Mary McGoldrick.
I, Ellen Marr.
I, Jean Estina.